All right. I'm not gonna make, I just didn't know. I'm sure you all saw them too. County news. Anything interesting in there? Iowa supervisor saves assessor from gunman.
Can't go to the Lions, most of the Lions offseason either. They got like, it's with the second or third thing? Everybody just looks at weekends. No person's a weekend.
Everybody ready, Betty? All right, call the commissioner.
Here we go. Call the commissioner to order. We have your minutes for reports.
I have the treasures monthly report and the recorder of deeds fees for September was filed with us.
All right. Commissioner Committee Liaison reports and announcements of upcoming meetings and/or events.
Perk, what if I have no responsibility for Board of Realtors, planned commission meeting tonight, Board of Directors community tomorrow for Board of Directors for Board of Realtors, Campo tomorrow, Chamber Connections tomorrow. About it.
What's our next meeting?
It's the bad week of meetings.
It is a bad week. I don't have anything else to add to that. First item on the agenda is the Mustang Grant. Where are we at on that? Still waiting?
We're waiting for it to return again unless it is substantively different than it was before. It's two different from the grant application. Did you say that, Jill?
That sounds perfect, Ray.
I agree. The stuff they've tried sneaking in there is not acceptable and we wouldn't want to sign it. Just so you guys know, I don't know if you were in the emails on that, the, we approved the grant application a month or two ago, give or take. We got, we, I was, we got awarded a hundred and something thousand dollars. We got the actual grant documents to sign and they had slipped in some pretty onerous liability provisions in there. Basically, we're saying that we're responsible for anything, everything, and forever anything. And everybody else is immune.
That hundred thousand dollars is not just us, that's everybody in the state.
So, we kind of agreed we would send it back and say, no, we can't do that. And we've not heard back on what their final opinion will be. So, next item on the agenda is the accounts payable review. I entertain a motion to prove the same.
So moved.
He's got one in there? Okay, second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstain.
Next item is the renewal of county health insurance. Randy, Joe, come on up. Grab a microphone each.
Each, each.
Oh, Joe. Joe loves these.
Thank you, Joe.
My last, my last green folder.
That's right.
Can you visit me? Just because you-
I don't know, wait, just tell me, tell me after this presentation.
Mark's last green folder, is it on?
My last green folder.
Probably, probably it's fitting that this is probably the best green folder we've had to go over.
Yeah, I've been here for eight of them. Finally get a good one?
Finally got a good one.
Don't be like that. The best never gets.
You accomplished your mission.
Yeah, guys, good luck from here on out.
That's right. That's right. Well, we appreciate the commissioner allowing us to take time this morning to walk through the county's renewal of their employee benefits. And in the packet, on the right-hand side, we took liberty to put together an agenda. So, we'll hit on those things high level as to do things we need to dig into, a little bit more specifics, and talk about the medical first, then we're going to talk about the Affordable Care Act, some requirements and mandates there, and then last, wrap up on your ancillary coverages, which are your life and dental and so forth. So, right behind the agenda page, the first item on the agenda below the medical renewals, the stop-loss renewal. So, if you go to the page right behind that, there's two highlighted yellow words there, current and renewal. Just as a reminder, 1-1 of 2014, the county moved into a partial self-funded plan. So, we left a fully insured environment that we'd been in for a long time. The county was partial self-funded years ago, but, so we were fully insured, just a quick reference to that. When you're fully insured, you know, each year, the carrier is estimating what they think you're going to have in claims, looking at your claims history, what you have for ongoing claimants, large claimants. They come up with that amount, they add their cost of doing business, they add their profit margin, and they come up with an annual fixed cost premium, fully insured premium. You pay that to the carrier. Each year at renewal, you have a true-up or renewal. As your independent advisor, we market the, the plan every year, look at the market, and generally, you're still facing those, you know, double-digit or at least single-digit increases in general in the fully insured market. So, in looking at different options of funding the past couple of years, we looked at partial self-funding in 2013, decided to stay fully insured that year. But last year, in reviewing it, because the numbers lined up very well from a liability standpoint, the county made the decision to go partial self-funding. So, when you go partial self-funding, I just wanted to kind of remind you of the brief history that we start tracking claims from January 1 of 2014 going forward. And walking down through this page, if you don't mind, I'll just walk through this quickly to just remind you of how the math works and where we're getting these numbers from. So, on the top-left corner, this is your 1-1 2015 stop-loss renewal. And these rates are firm. However, we're hoping to get a decision today if possible because the carrier is ready to lock in, the reinsurance carrier, and these rates are good until the 15th. If we go past that, it just could involve some additional underwriting, so we'll talk about that as needed as we wrap up. The census, we show our employees of 218 employees, nine employee spouse, the E and A plus S, 47 employee and children, whether it's one child or more, and then six employees and families, which would be a spouse and one or more children. For a total of 280 covered employees, but then out of that, you actually have more insured members because if Randy's insured and he has a family of five, you know, there's five belly buttons, so to speak. So, 280 employees insured plus additional family members covered. The, on the left-hand side, we'll go down through the providers and the coverages that you're purchasing, compare that then to current and renewal. So, the third-party administrator, the TPA, is UMR. And UMR is owned by United Healthcare. So, last year when we left fully insured, it was a smooth transition to stay with, or to go to UMR, but stay with the United Healthcare Network. So, the network did not change as far as the medical providers that the employees could utilize. So, that was a fairly smooth transition. The only way to get to United's network and to what we feel are their deeper discounts is to use their TPA, which is UMR. We'd also looked at another independent TPA at that time, but made that decision. The next area is your specific reinsurance coverage. Just as a reminder, if we were a very large employer, I'll use Ford Motor Company just as an example, you know, they may not even purchase specific reinsurance. They're large enough to simply have a TPA to process their claims. When the, when the checks come, or the bills come in after they've been discounted through the network, they're writing that, that check for whatever the claim amount is. Most employers in the county's size, on up into even a couple thousand lives, typically buy reinsurance to give you coverage on large claimants. So, the specific carrier is BP, is the carrier we underwrite with, their current reinsurance carrier. The contract is a 12-15. Just as a reminder, the contract covers us from January 1 of 2014, the current contract, for all claims incurred during the first 12 months, so the full year of 2014, as long as they're incurred, reported, and paid by the 15th month, which would be through March. So, that gives you protection. If Randy goes in the hospital on 12-15, I have a $50,000 claim, but it's not processed and paid until January or February, March. It's still covered under this contract. The specific deductible is a $50,000 deductible, so that means the county is self-insuring the first $50,000 of each individual's specific claimant during that policy period. After that, your reinsurance would step in and pay for anything that was a covered benefit. Your benefits are medical and pharmacy, which is important, so it's not just medical claims that go to the $50,000, it's also prescriptions. And you'll see in a little bit, the prescriptions continue to be a larger part of our medical, overall medical costs, so it's important that's included. When you set up a partial self-funded plan, it's very transparent because you break all the cost out to all the administrators and service providers. So, you can see that the third-party administration with UMR is the 3852, and that's not changing. The network access fee for UHC, United Healthcare, is included in their fee, it's not a separate line item. The broker advisor fee is 595, and these are per employee per month cost, and that's not changing. That's what we're paid as your advisor. It's a flat fee, so even if you have an increase in reinsurance or anything else, we're not getting an increase in there unless we negotiate that with the county for our advisor services. The utilization review, pre-certification of claims, is also included in the third-party administrator fee, and again, that's not changing. Your aggregate premium, which I'll talk more about the coverage on this in a minute, but it's your global, it kind of gives you that ceiling of protection, it's the lower part of this page, but you're paying the 523, that's not changing. It also covers medical and RX under those benefits. Where you are having a slight change is on the specific deductible, reinsurance premium. Currently, it's at 8780, going to $90.02. I won't read through all four of those, but you can see that there's a slight increase in those. So, when you look at your fixed cost today, total annual fixed cost, based on those numbers on a monthly basis, times your census of, census of 280, times 12, it gets you to the 517,000, just rounding off numbers, and it's going to 526. So, we're having just a, a very, very small increase on the fixed cost, which are important because these are hard dollars. And where that's coming from is a slight increase in your specific reinsurance premium. Keep in mind that, the nice thing about partial self-funding is we've shopped the reinsurance out, and we'll do that every single year to multiple reinsurance carriers. There was no one that came in less than BP. We were actually able to get BP down from where they first started. So, we feel very, very good with the renewal, especially having a first-year renewal, and obviously now they have even more claim information out there than they had before. So, that is your-
28% increase is what you're saying on our fixed?
Yeah. So, I mean, it's very, very low compared to the market. When you move into the, any other questions on that before I jump into the aggregate? Okay? Your aggregate coverage is, is not a coverage you have to buy. You typically do buy the specific, again, that $50,000 to cover that, that large claimant. Aggregate coverage you do not have to buy, but it kind of gives you a budget or what we would call sleep well at night insurance. So, it's a separate coverage, that's what you're paying the $5.23 for. And if you take that 523 times 280 times 12, you're probably looking around, I'm guessing here, about $30,000 a year. I could do the math real quick, but, so you're not paying a ton of premium for this coverage, but what that coverage gives you is a 12-15 contract, it covers medical and pharmacy, and it gives you a million-dollar policy. And I'll come back to this in a second and remind you where that steps in. But what you're basically asking the carrier to do is look at your overall claims, look at your utilization, expected claims, and to give you a top end or a ceiling that if you go past that, they're going to step in and pay. So, they come up with that estimate, they add what's called a corridor of 25% to it. So, they set it at a level that you're probably not going to hit, not expected to hit. Less than 2% of companies in the United States hit their ceiling on average in a year. So, they set that limit, and that, that creates what we call attachment factors. And you'll see the current attachment factor for employee-only is $455.09. It's going down just a little bit, and then all, the rest of those three tiers are going down as well. But when you take those factors, times your four-tier census above, times 12, it gets you to this ceiling of, of coverage or expenses that you would have to go through. So, currently at 1,817, renewing at 1,813, again, based on this census. So, basically what we're, they're saying is, the county would have to spend $1,813,000 in claims with no claim going over $50,000, because if Randy had a $500,000 claim, only $50,000, that claim is going to go towards this 1.8 million, because you have a separate specific reinsurance for that. So, you would have to go through 1.8 million in expenses, claims that the county owes and pays. Then, there would be a $1 million policy that would step in, and that's what you're purchasing, is that million-dollar policy to cover you, cover you over top of that ceiling. Let me stop with that, and I'm throwing a lot at you again as a quick reminder from last year, but any initial questions on?
How much is the actual policy?
So, the actual policy-
The million-dollar policy, how much does that cost?
Uh, the, what it costs is the 523-
That's the 523.
Yeah, 523 times 280.
Got it. Thank you.
So, when you add your fixed cost of 526,000, which are true dollars, we know we're paying that out. If we have zero claims, we know we're paying the 526 out. Then you add your claims liability, which is your max liability, very unlikely you'll hit it. It gets you to your total maximum funding cost for the year, which you can see you were at 2,334, going to 2,339. So, about a potential $5,000 overall increase in total liability. And just, Mark, to your question, the aggregate premium, the 523 times the 280 times 12, is just under 18,000. So, you're paying about $18,000 in premium for that million-dollar policy. Some employers do not buy aggregate, and through the years, as the county gets more comfortable with partial self-funding, you may choose not to. The risk, in my opinion, the risk you run is a natural disaster, like what happened in Joplin with the tornado, or an epidemic where you would have multiple members out of those 280 employees plus family members, all get injured or sick in a short period of time, and realizing the county is on, is responsible for the first $50,000 of all of those claims. And if you took 280 times 50,000, that's a very, very large number. So, it gives you a ceiling that, you know, once you hit that, you've got coverage. So, fairly inexpensive protection, but if we went down the road 10 years and had a crystal ball and could look back, you may spend 18,000, 20,000 a year for 10 years and never need that coverage. You know, there's $200,000. But conservatively, you know, we would suggest that you continue to purchase that. Overall, a very, very good renewal. Any questions specific to the renewal or the numbers? Okay?
Just got a question on the-
Sure.
The 12-15. So, since we've only been in this nine months, basically, do we not really know how we end this first year until March?
Great, great question, Chris. So, you're exactly right. So, this carrier who you're with today, who agreed to the original premium, is on the risk until the end of March. So, here we're asking for a renewal early in the year, and to get a renewal from them and have it come in favorable is good, because they don't know the ending number until the end of March. So, all in all, it's been a good year, but a first year, the, the first few months of a new year, typically you build up some reserve because there's not much claims going in in January and February, but eventually that catches up. So, to your point, we were very happy with the first-year renewal, because you will end up getting on more of a mature basis in the reinsurance world as you go. If that answers your question?
Yeah, it does answer my question, but I mean, so really, we don't really know how we're gonna, I mean, going next year, I mean, we're going to be fine because we can renew today, but-
Right.
For 2016, that may look a whole, a whole lot different.
That's correct. So, the, the thing to keep in mind is, you're, you're gonna, over time, the county is going to have some high claimants. We've had a couple this year. The reinsurance carrier's paid back some money this year. We've had some claims go over $50,000. That's why you buy specific reinsurance. And, and we're going to have years with the county or any large employer where you're going to have some years where it's just, you know, one of those years. And when that happens, you're not going to get a, you know, 1% renewal on your specific. I mean, it's going to go up. But that's the other reason for shopping that reinsurance behind the scenes, because if, I'll use Debbie as an example, if Debbie's the reinsurance carrier today, and she just ends up unfortunately not having a good risk with the county, but those claims are over and done, and that person's returned to work or whatever the case is, Debbie may be wanting a big increase, but that doesn't mean Joe, the other reinsurance carrier, Randy, the other new reinsurance carrier, looking at it and realizing those claims are no longer there, might sharpen their pencil. So-
We've got history with them. So, those claims don't necessarily, I mean, they may follow you with that carrier, but they, a new carrier may not look at those claims and say, those are history.
They're, exactly right. And they're, that's actually very specific. We will get case notes on those conditions, those, those case management notes go to each reinsurance carrier. And so, let's say that, I'm just using an example, let's say we had a premature birth, and it was a large neonatal situation. But moms fine, babies are fine. I mean, even though that current carrier might have had a half a million dollar claim, you know, everybody's fine, that's not a current condition going forward. So, that's the, the beauty of partial self-funding is you set up all your service providers, you drill down on fixed cost, and then you shop that reinsurance carrier every year. But with that said, if we have multiple things going on that are looking like they're going to continue to go on and manifest, it's not, that's where you have a tough renewal, from a specific standpoint. And your, your aggregate, that's kind of your specific coverage, great question. Your aggregate coverage, that overall umbrella, that's, you're going to have differences there through the years where you have a lot of employees that have claims under $50,000, but there's just a lot of utilization. And you might see these attachment factors, instead of going down, they might go up. But again, those are soft dollars, you know, we're not physically writing a check for 2,339,000. You're writing a check for 526, and then you're writing a check as claims are incurred, processed, and paid, which is the beauty of self-funding, is the cash reserves. So-
Right.
Great question. Any other questions? Just a side note on the fully insured side, we still work with, a lot of employers are fully insured. It is not a pretty market on the fully insured side. We're seeing more or less across the board, double-digit increases. A lot of that's coming back to the fees and things associated with ACA, some of those specifically affecting fully insured, which is one of the reasons we looked at partial self-funding. So, I think the county's ahead of the game with where things are going on that side. The page right behind that, we won't spend a lot of time on these, but just for your review, this first page, it says Cole County Commission Aggregate Detail. It just shows you the claims to date on a monthly basis. So, if you look at each month there, and you go kind of to the middle of the page where it says total monthly claims, you can see the claims per month. You can see in January, it was, of course, very little, a little bit more in February and on down through it, but 536,000 total in claims. Now, that does not include your fixed cost, that's just your claims cost.
That's through August.
That's through August. The page right behind that, and Debbie gets these reports, we've done a lot of work with Debbie, looking at Joe specifically, going through with Debbie the reporting, having some meetings with UMR, phone conferences to walk through the reporting and so forth. I think Debbie, you're, you're doing great, I can tell you that, so.
But I can get that right for you.
Good. So, she has the reporting. The UMR right behind that, we wanted to give you an idea of the network, because again, you know, being with UMR and with United's network, you know, what you're looking for there is a great discount. So, this does show that you've averaged a 53.2% discount when you include all of your in-network services, both hospitalization, inpatient, outpatient. You had a little bit of out-of-network cost there, might have been someone traveling or a child at school or whatever, but the majority of all your claims are staying in-network and over a 50% discount, which is great. The page right behind that, we're going to spend just a little bit more time on, and this gets down to plan designs, and it kind of moves into the next area of our agenda, which is the Affordable Care Act and non-grandfathered plans. The county is what we call a non-grandfathered plan, meaning that when the Affordable Care Act came out, March 23 of 2010, in order to stay grandfathered, you had very little limitations in changing premiums or benefits. So, most employers, it was very difficult to do for the past, you know, almost five years now. So, the county became non-grandfathered at a point that we changed premiums and coverages at a level that we needed to, you know, to have a sustainable renewal. With that, one of the things the government is doing this year, 1-1 of 15, at the renewal, is all of your pharmacy costs that the members pay, so the copayments that they pay for pharmacy, now have to be included in your out-of-pocket maximum. In the past, they weren't. So, in the past, on your, like your traditional plan, the high deductible HSA is a little bit different, but just using the traditional plan on the right-hand side as an example. Currently, you have an individual deductible of 1,000, a family deductible of 2,000. Your out-of-pocket maximum is currently $3,000, and that includes your deductible. So, that's a $1,000 deductible, and then a co-insurance that the member pays until they reach that out-of-pocket. So, if Randy had a $100,000 claim, what would it cost me for that medical claim, the most it would cost me, $3,000 if I stayed in-network? As a family, if you had multiple family members covered, the most it would cost you is 6,000. So, currently, there's a medical out-of-pocket bucket, if you will. And then you've got pharmacy. If you jump to the bottom just for a second in the bold print where it says current RX, the current prescriptions are 15, 35, and 60. There's three different levels. We used to call them generic and brand, or non-preferred and preferred, now they're just, it's basically, it still is a generic, but your, your least it costs, least costly prescription generally are the 15. Then you have a list of drugs on a formulary that are the 35, and then non-formular 60. Right now, the members pay those copayments, but there's no maximum amount that they pay. And it did not go to this out-of-pocket. So, now the government's forcing you to include those in the out-of-pocket maximum. The county doesn't have to raise the out-of-pocket maximum, but if you don't, it means that if Randy has that $100,000 surgery, and I'm going, and I meet my $3,000, I also have 100% coverage for prescriptions now, because that's the max out-of-pocket. So, conservatively, from a business standpoint, we would recommend the county raise the out-of-pocket maximum. So, with the government saying you have to include it, they've also given us guidelines on the maximum allowable out-of-pocket, and that is listed there in the middle of the page, kind of the dark blue purplish. So, it says government out-of-pocket maximums for 2015. So, if you stay on the right-hand side, the traditional PPO plan, we can go up to 6,600 on the individual and 13,200 on the family. If you would do that, what we would recommend, so it's a very small disruption to the members, actually gives them a benefit under this plan, is keep your deductible and your out-of-pocket at 3,000. So, we've showcased that right below there again. So, you're not raising the deductible, you're not raising the out-of-pocket on the medical side. My $100,000 claim still cost me 3,000. But you put a cap on the pharmacy, a separate out-of-pocket limit on the pharmacy, which is allowed, of $3,600. And keep in mind, there's no cap today. So, it would take a lot of copayments to reach that, but there's no cap today. Now, you can put a separate cap on that, and which you, you have to include pharmacy in there. So, if you don't put a separate cap, it means everything's going to go towards this 3,000. If you put a separate cap, we can break it out, and pharmacy can go towards its own specific cap. Now, we went to the full limit of a combined 6,600. You don't, you could lower that, but in that example, all pharmacy copayments would go towards that out-of-pocket maximum. There's something else we want to talk about, but let me stop with that because I know that-
What's our current numbers?
The, the current, the current numbers-
Current medical is?
3,000. A $1,000 deductible, Mark, and a total of 3,000 out-of-pocket, including the deductible.
And that includes everything?
That includes everything except pharmacy.
Okay. So, prescriptions are just excluded from that number?
That's correct.
And that applies PPO or HSA?
Uh, your HSA numbers are, on the left-hand side, they're-
The numbers are slightly different, but, but the HSA out-of-pocket does not include pharmacy?
It does. The HSA is different, because under the Health Savings Account, pharmacy was always included. So, government's kind of heading towards that whole theme is what it's amounting to. Now, we're suggesting raising the out-of-pocket there too, to give you some more protection, but-
So, the HSA already has? I'm not following it.
Okay. So, on, on the, just to shift, on the, on the high deductible health plan HSA, our current deductible is 2,500. For anything medical beyond that, it was 100% coverage. But then there was another $1,000 of, of copay co-insurance that was made up of pharmacy. So, this was already built in there. And so, that 3,500 currently includes pharmacy. Okay?
No, I haven't done.
Sorry.
Okay?
We got extras.
Thank you.
Everybody else sitting there, definitely want something interesting to read.
So, the, so it does get, it does get confusing-
So, the 3,500 includes a thousand of pharmacy?
Correct. A thousand copays. And that, I know this is confusing, but that's the way high deductible health plans were designed originally. There was no upfront coverage for pharmacy, you had to meet your deductible first, then you went into copay structure.
But after that $1,000 of pharmacy-
It's 100% coverage.
100% coverage.
For all covered benefits.
100% HSA current. Hundred percent HSA currently.
Correct. Correct. So...
That's why HSA is better. That's why we shouldn't even have a PPO. I think we still do have PPO, but that's a different issue.
I get my head bashed in by your process on that issue. Right, didn't I, Jeff?
Well, we're a lot younger. I'm just saying, it makes a difference. You know, if you add older commissioners up, or they might feel differently. They say, "Well, PPO is the best."
HSA works if you...
I'm HSA, and I'm over.
HSA works if you have...
Oh, you're still young, Greg.
HSA works if you have very little utilization, or you have a lot of utilization.
Correct.
It does not work if you're in the middle.
The majority of our employees are on the traditional.
But it does encourage people to be consumers. Now, PPO does not encourage you to be a consumer, because there's no, I mean, you go to the emergency room, you just pay the copay. I mean, when you, when you have a HSA, you make decisions on urgent care, emergency room, et cetera, because up until you hit that cap, it's all your money.
It's your money.
Which affects our utilization rates, which now, not so much this year, because this is our little bubble year where we get, get the advantage. Budget year, it's our bubble year. Next year, it starts to actually impact in the bottom line.
How much is it going to impact it, though? I mean, is there any way to say? Because if we're going to do it, it'd be something where people that are already hired and already on a traditional plan would still be eligible for that, but forthcoming, you'd have to be HSA and say, "That's all we're going to do." I mean, that's something we can look at. Is it, is it going to be enough to save us some money?
The other issue I mentioned before, too, or a question, Jeff, is some, some individuals are not eligible to put money in an HSA. So, they can be on the high deductible plan, but if they have any other coverage, they're a spouse, retired military, if their family's on Medicaid maybe, they can't put money in a health savings account, and the county cannot put it in there for them. So...
But they actually have to be on other insurance.
Yeah, they have to have other insurance.
I mean, they have to be on it.
They have to be on it.
They have to be on other insurance. Not that they're eligible. They actually have to be on it.
But like a retired military. So, if I was working here, retired military, I could take that insurance. I simply could not put money in an HSA because I'm on...
Because you have primary somewhere else, and we serve as a secondary at that point. That's the theory behind it.
Yeah. Well, this would be, this would be primary where I work, but I have secondary insurance, and that's the theory behind it, that I have somewhere else to turn in claims to rather than an HSA. So, they're trying to avoid the tax deduction, the government is. And that wouldn't be a lot of people, but usually, that's why an employer will offer two options. It gives the employees a choice, and if the employee likes the idea of the copay world, depending on their thought process, they're paying more in premium for it, and, I mean, or the county's paying for it, but I mean, they're making that choice for them and their family and so forth.
And in the last few years, there has been a push to that. I mean, with Joe explaining it and coming to the meetings, there has been more employees that have taken the HSA. If they really sit down and crunch the numbers, to them, it's better for some, that they would have never thought of before switching.
So, it's a, it's an education process. It takes time. So, on, on the high deductible plan, and you do not have to make these changes. I mean, number one, there's, there's two things we want to talk about, getting your old thoughts and decision on, is one, and you have two different plans, so it may be two different decisions on those plans, but... So, first of all, on the high deductible HSA on the left, our current deductible's twenty-five hundred. The current out-of-pocket is thirty-five hundred, which includes pharmacy copay cost. The government is allowing you to take that limit to six thousand four fifty. And it doesn't mean you would change the deductible, so we're giving you an example of proposed changes. You would still keep the deductible at twenty-five hundred individually and five thousand as a family. So, once someone hits that for medical-related costs, they're at a hundred percent coverage. The question is, the question is, after that twenty-five hundred, they're going to start paying their copayments for pharmacy, just like they are today, and rather than it being limited to, limited to another thousand in copayments, you could go all the way up to three thousand nine fifty, or somewhere between those two, to give the county, from a business perspective, more protection before you're stepping in and paying. You don't have to do that, but that's, that's one thought on the high deductible. And then on the traditional plan, it's even more relevant, because currently pharmacy's not included in these out-of-pockets. So, on the traditional plan, just walking through that again, you currently have a thousand-dollar deductible individually, two thousand family. You have an out-of-pocket of three thousand, which does include the medical deductible, but does not include anything on pharmacy. Now, the government's making you include pharmacy. So, if you don't raise that three thousand, it just means the county's going to be on a risk quicker. My example of my hundred-thousand-dollar claim medically, once I hit my three thousand, my pharmacy's now covered at a hundred percent. So, the question becomes, do we put in a, an amount on the pharmacy, which is more similar to the HSA at that point, that the member has to pay until they hit that ceiling? The government allows you to go to a total of sixty-six hundred. So, if you would, in the example below that, we show you keeping your out-of-pocket at three thousand individually for the medical, and then putting a pharmacy cap of thirty-six hundred for the total of the sixty-six. And keep in mind, today, there is no cap. So, for your employees that are covered under this plan, it's actually a benefit to them, because now they have no cap. They pay these copayments forever, forever, and it doesn't go towards anything. Here, it would go towards that cap. If they would hit that, they're now at a hundred percent coverage.
How, how is this going to affect us with very high expensive, like, cancer drugs and different things like that? I mean, I would assume that there's, employees got to pay a big percentage of that, but at some point, we're going to have to pay for all of it?
Right. So, great question. You're reading my mind here. That goes into the next, on the very bottom in the red, we talk about proposed RX changes. Again, you don't have to do this, but the county currently is on a three-tier copayment. No matter what the cost of the drug is, that member's either paying the ten, thirty, or fifty...
Well, that's not entirely true. If it's on the formulary...
Correct.
So, if you've got a high kind of cancer drug, there's a decent shot you're not on the formulary, in which case, you get no deductible. You pay the market rate.
Right. If it's, if it's not on the formulary, I mean, a cover, if it's a covered...
The formulary is very restrictive, and it's designed to exclude basically anything that's a high-value drug. I mean, that's how they've structured them. You know, if you're taking, if you're taking a medication that's two hundred dollars a prescription, and there's a kind of close, but not really the same, medication that's thirty dollars a prescription, you can't get the two hundred dollar one on the formulary. You're going to get the other one, even if it has side effects that bother you. And we've gone, I mean, practical experience, I can tell you that.
Right. It, I mean, the, when you look at any carrier, they're going to have a, any pharmacy benefit management company, they'll have a formulary. Those prescriptions will be lined out in that formulary. And today, you have three, three tiers. So, we have tier one, tier two, tier three. The issue we're having in the United States, and it goes back to Chris's point, is a big pharmacy, all their research and development is on these higher costing biotech drugs. From a humanitarian side, they may have great therapeutic results, so I don't want to sound disrespectful of that. From a business side, they are very expensive. And we're going to give you some examples of those in a second of what the county's spending there. So, when you think about what's happening in the United States, with all the research there, and I'll give you an easy example. Let's say Randy takes the oral form of rheumatoid arthritis medicine today. It might be a two hundred or three hundred dollar a month prescription. And maybe I'm paying the full fifty or sixty dollars, but the county's only paying the other two fifty or two hundred, which is still a large amount, but, you know, we're talking about a two, three hundred dollar a month drug here. My physician meets with me and says, "Randy, there's a latest self-injectable on the market. I've looked at it, had the companies talk to me, the pharmacy companies, great therapeutic values. I think you would do well with it. What do you think about taking it?" Well, the first question is, what's it cost? Well, under your current plan, if it's a covered drug, under your current plan, the most I'm going to pay is fifty or sixty, even if it costs three, four, or five thousand dollars.
If it's on the formulary?
If it's on the formulary.
Which, of course, it won't be.
Some of them are. Some of them are. They just require per-off and things like that. I mean, you do have to go through the steps to get them, but a lot of these high-dollar drugs that we're talking about are on the formulary. Both. The formulary is the same, no matter which plan design you're on. That formulary is the same. Pardon me?
Including the HSA?
Correct. It's just that at the HSA level, until you meet that deductible, you pay that full price. Once you meet the deductible, then it simply goes to the copays. Okay?
But if you're off the formulary, you're under an HSA, you get no benefit?
No, it's totally your choice whether you take it or not.
For, when you hit the seven thousand dollar cap or whatever, that means nothing. It's just irrelevant.
No, because if you take a medication that's not on the formulary, it's at your cost, and nothing counts toward anything, unfortunately.
So, what's happening in the marketplace is the introduction of a fourth-tier copayment. So, we've given an example here of keeping your current three copayments the same. So, under the high deductible HSA, it's ten, thirty, or fifty, but if it is a specialty medication, that the member would pay a percentage of the cost of the drug, we're giving an example of twenty-five percent, to a maximum per fill. So, twenty-five percent of the cost to a maximum, and we, we gave you an example of two hundred dollars. And the same thing on the traditional plan. Of course, the copayments there are fifteen, thirty, and sixty. So, if you'll hold that train of thought for a second, if you go to the page behind it, behind that, this is some overall general information, and then a little bit more specific information on the last page. But during the first and second quarter of this year, we have average membership of four hundred and seventeen during the first quarter, four eleven during the second quarter. That's a number of belly buttons covered, all the employees and dependents. There were an average utilizing members of three members in the first quarter, two members in the second quarter, that filled specialty drug, drug benefits. There was eleven of those, the drug utilization, the RX count, there was eleven filled in the first quarter, four in the second quarter. The average cost prescription in the first quarter was three thousand ninety dollars. Your average copay that the member paid was thirty-nine dollars, so just over one percent of the cost of that medication. In the fourth, in the second quarter, it was one thousand ninety-two, and the member paid thirty-one dollars. So, not that you have to make this change, but where we're heading, again, this is more global than just the county, but we're heading towards employees and members being introduced to take higher costing biotech medicines, a lot of them self-injectables, for things like rheumatoid arthritis, MS, cancer drugs, and there are hundreds of these at the FDA, research and development, trying to be approved. As they're approved, they're going to be marketed by those drug manufacturers to the physicians to be implemented and offered to the patients. And they are very expensive. If you flip to the next page, this gives you an example of your actual prescription cost, and this is de-identified, but it just shows...
These are actual usages.
Yeah. So, when you look at this very first one, it shows the member, just, this lists the member, number one, number two, so forth. It doesn't list names, obviously, but it shows the fill date, and it shows the copayment and the paid amount. So, on this very first one, just as an example, we have a member that's paying a fifteen-dollar copayment for a six thousand dollar a month prescription. And it is not uncommon to see these types of costs. We have a school district, I won't name a name, it's actually in a different area of the state, they have a, one member that's taking a prescription, it's fifty thousand dollars a month. So, these biotech drugs are very, very expensive. Now, you have one right below that, that's, you know, four hundred dollars, you know, as an example. One below that, that's two seventy-six, one below that's twenty-five hundred. So, they range, but that's why the idea of a percentage, rather than a flat copayment, it is probably more fair to the member if they're paying twenty-five percent of a thousand or twenty-five percent of three thousand. They're, of course, paying an appropriate percentage, depending on the cost of that medication. So, I think a couple things to think about. One, we don't have a lot of members using these today compared to four hundred and some people being covered, but that's going to change. And you don't have to make this change today, but whenever you make the change, it is going to be disruptive. It's going to be disruptive to these members. If it's, if Randy's one of those...
It's going to go from fifteen or sixty, depending which, well, it's going to go from sixty to two hundred.
Right. So, the person that's getting this five thousand, six thousand dollar prescription, it's going to be a two hundred dollar copayment. With that said, the drug manufacturers are smart, and Chris could catch on where we're going here. The drug manufacturers are facing plan designs now with these four-tier plans, and this is very relevant, even in fully insured plans. So, what are they doing? They're coming out and saying, "Look, we'll waive the copayment." Not on every one of these, but on a lot of these, there's copay assistance programs. So, the drug manufacturers coming out and saying, "Look, Randy, you've called us about the drug. You're interested in taking it, but it's going to cost you two hundred dollars." I'm just using this as an example. "We offer a copay assistance program where I sign up for that, I don't have to pay my two hundred." Now, unfortunately, the self-employed employer, Cole County, or the fully insured company, Blue Cross Blue Shield, is still getting the bill for the other fifty-eight hundred dollars. You're not, you're not affecting really the decision of that member if there's copay assistance programs out there, but the drug manufacturers have enough, obviously, profit margin to write off these higher copayments. So, I'm not saying that's going to happen for every one of them. I think if you make the decision, you have to realize that this could affect one of your employees or members, and it could go from a fifty or sixty dollar cost to a two hundred dollar cost. In this case, it's a fifteen dollar cost going to a two hundred dollar cost, which, I'm not belittling that. I mean, that's, that's real dollars. But over time, this list is going to become one page, and two pages, and three pages. That's where we're heading in the United States with specialty medications. So, it's estimated by two thousand and eighteen, forty percent of your pharmacy costs will be specialty drugs in general. So, the question is, do you do something now before we get more and more members taking those to try to, number one, have them pay what I would say, from a business perspective, a more fair share of a higher costing medication? So, really, two things for the commission to decide, you know, the four-tier copayments with the specialty, twenty-five percent to two hundred, we can do different amounts. You could do twenty percent to one fifty. I mean, you can do whatever amount you want there, but I would suggest a percentage with the cap. And then we also get back to the two out-of-pocket maximums, now that you're having to include pharmacy in the traditional plan. It's already in the HSAs, we talked about, but do you want to adjust those caps to give the county some more protection before you're paying a hundred percent of the claim?
So, the twenty-five percent to a, to a maximum of two hundred dollars is for the person filling the prescription?
Correct.
I see. On page two here, I'm just a little confused. You've got cost per script of three thousand ninety dollars, and I'm just a little...
That's the average cost?
Average cost over all members.
Of those eleven, yeah. Of those eleven scripts, that was the average cost. The amount paid right above that, it's not highlighted, Chris, but the, the amount paid was thirty-three thousand five sixty-two.
Right, I see that, yeah.
So, divided by elevens, the three thousand ninety.
It's just an average cost.
Yeah, an average. And then the page behind that actually shows you some actual real drug costs. So, this is just an average, and it's also just an average of your members' copayments at the thirty-nine oh nine.
And it's only the specialty drugs?
Oh, this is only specialty. So, right now, we had three members out of four hundred and some during the first quarter, two members during the second quarter out of four hundred and some using specialty medications. And again, it's going to be, going to be disruptive to them. Again, not trying to belittle that, but...
It's a big hit when you first get it, and then it looks like it's jumped way down.
Right.
Do we have any, second quarter ended, twenty thirty?
We don't, we don't have third quarter numbers yet from them. We'll probably get them pretty quick, but...
I mean, we should be, we have to write the checks. We should have some idea. I don't know if we see any...
It doesn't really break it out that way, right? We get these specifically from the PBM, but...
I mean, I just would assume with a thirty-three percent of our drug costs being specialties, that if our drug cost went down in the second quarter, then in the third quarter, we'd be able to look at it, month to month at least, and say, "Wow, there's a big jump in August."
Right.
Which might give us an indication.
And we can go back and look at, like, pharmacy.
It's redundant with the quarter. Third quarter's done.
So, what do we expect our, our hit on that to be? I mean, with, having to include prescriptions, I mean, what do we expect the county's portion? I mean, is there, is there a number?
It's not really. It's hard to have that crystal ball, because you, you don't know how many members. Randy might be someone taking three medicines today, not having any ceiling, and maybe I haven't had any health history, but next year I have knee surgery. Well, I'm going to hit my three thousand out-of-pocket with my knee surgery. So, now my three prescriptions are going to be covered at a hundred percent. And for the member, that's a very nice benefit. I mean, now their pharmacy's covered at a hundred percent, which means the county is picking up what would have been that member's copayments, the county is now paying for, that fifteen, thirty, or fifty, or so forth.
So, on that prescription, when it falls under a copay, and so I'm, I'm picking up a drug, and I pay my twenty-five dollar copay, the county's picking up the remainder?
Correct.
Of the discounted rate?
That's correct. Of the discounted rate, and then you're monitoring all those claims of that individual person for pharmacy, for medical, and until that person has over fifty thousand accumulated claims, the county's paying all those claims unless you have a claim that goes over that fifty thousand dollar specific deductible. So, in reality, except for high claimants, the county is partial self-funded. Beyond what the member pays in copayments, deductibles, and co-insurance, the county's paying the difference until you hit your specific deductible. Not that you want to. You don't want that high claimant. So, for the most part, you're paying claims.
So, our specific deductible, our specific deductible, not individually, but the county's, that fifty thousand, that includes pharmacy?
Yes.
Okay. So, using that one prescription that's costing us six grand a month, after seven, eight, seven months, eight months, then we're done. seven months, eight months, then we're done?
Correct.
We would never have to pay it again that year.
Correct.
Till next year, we start over.
But the reinsurance carrier will, and then, the reinsurance carriers.
That makes you right.
And the, well, the reinsurance carrier's also going to look at your plan designs in the future, and they're gonna, you know, one employer who has a fourth-tier specialty copayment, and one that doesn't, obviously, there's more pressure on that reinsurance carrier, so.
So, I'm just curious, I mean, I've never really looked at the formulary, but, so, on an average drug, I mean, what percentage is the, the copay on a typical drug? I mean, is it twenty-five percent, is it fifty percent? I mean.
It, it just really fluctuates on the.
Take, for example, Nexium, it's just come to the marketplace, it's a GERD medication for indigestion. And when it was a monthly prescription, it ran about three hundred and seventy-five dollars a month.
Okay.
And was always at that highest tier copay until it came off of its copyright.
Mm-hmm.
So, that gives you kind of a general idea. Now, you might have a tier one drug, though, because with this being a fifteen dollar copay, that's a tier one medication that's actually costing nearly six thousand dollars a month. It just depends upon the particular med, it depends upon what it's treating, have there been other things out there.
How do they make that definition? I mean, I would assume a six thousand dollar drug would always be top tier.
Comes back into the formulary, where they're placing those prescriptions.
I mean, I guess my point was, is that, I mean, it's always nice to go to the pharmacy and pay fifteen dollars, but what does that drug cost, you know? And I would, I would assume that if I was going to the pharmacy and I was getting a generic diabetes medication or something that cost a hundred bucks, maybe I'd pay twenty-five. So, if I was getting a three hundred dollar drug, well, now I'd pay seventy-five.
It's not ever a direct correlation, you know, to what the med is, it depends on how long it's been on the market, how much usage that medication gets. It goes back to Mark talking about the HSA and being a consumer, because when you are on the HSA, you truly do consume. You go to the pharmacy, and when the pharmacist says, "Whoa, the doc gave you the new drug, didn't he? Okay, how much is it? Well, it's four hundred and twenty-five dollars. Oh, my gosh, don't you have anything that's a generic or something, you know, close to it? Oh, yeah, I've got this one over here for twenty-five bucks." You can bet that consumer who's spending their own HSA dollars is buying that twenty-five dollar drug. But same person goes in with a PPO plan, when the pharmacist says it's a sixty dollar copay, they're not even going to question it, they're just going to pay that copay and go on, and not realize what that difference is.
Mm-hmm.
Because when you are in that copay frame of mind, it's just like if I asked you, "How much did it cost you to go to the doctor last week?" Whatever your copay is, is what you're going to say to me. If I ask Mark, "What did it cost to go to the doctor last week?", Mark's going to tell me what his true costs were because of the HSA.
Right.
And that's how you become a consumer.
Actually, I'm going to tell you, "It cost me nothing."
You're going to lie to me?
No.
Well, because you've got your claim.
Because I'm not going to get the bill. I'm not going to get the bill for a month. Then, I'm going to tell you what it cost me last month to go to the doctor.
But that, but that's just the, the frame mind people are in, it's that whole copay frame mind, and they don't even think about what that true cost is. It's just like back in the old days with the HMOs, when you went and got an injection in the doctor's office, you never thought a thing of it, because it was covered under that ten dollar copay. But now, if you go to the doctor's office and they shoot you in your knee with that new jelly that's supposed to make you have your joints better, they don't think about it until they get the bill, because that is separated out, it's a surgical procedure, because it's invasive, they're needling you, that shot is seven hundred and fifty dollars. And a lot of people don't even ask when they're in there, they think it's going to be under their copay. And then, they're very angry when they come out, and it's not.
Well, and that was kind of to my point, you know, if you went to, to get your prescription, and they said, "Well, it's going to be three hundred dollars," you, "Well, I can't, I can't pay that, you know, what do you got that's, that I can pay twenty-five dollars for?" I mean, I think, you know, we got to make people consumers, because, I mean, I've been to the pharmacy before, and they wanted four hundred dollars for a couple of pills, and I was like, "I ain't doing that."
I'll suffer.
Yeah.
Well.
Self-medicate on some Advil.
Yeah. So, well, to Chris's point, and again, just from a business perspective, when you have a, a member paying fifteen dollars for a six thousand dollar prescription, I'm not saying that twenty-five percent to two hundred's going to change their mind, maybe it's working well for them and, and well-deserved, but, you know, paying a more appropriate cost in general is going to be better for the county as you go forward. Over time, just to your point too, Chris, when you look at these flat copayments, and we, you know, you came, you came about, upon these benefits through historical, being on different types of benefit plans, to Joe's point, back to HMOs. So, we're still evolving, we're going to continue to evolve with medical benefits in the United States, but due to these rising prescription costs, the issue with having stagnant copayments is the drugs keep going up about fifteen to twenty percent a year. So, Randy's high blood pressure medicine this year is more expensive last year. Well, if my, if my copayment's stagnant, which it is, it just means that the fully insured carrier or the self-funded employer's paying more and more every year. So, over time, how do you, what do you do? You either adjust these copayments, but even if you raise these five dollars or whatever, you're probably not keeping up with inflation. I do predict over time, we'll see, I'm not suggesting it this year with the county, but I think over time, you're going to see maybe all four of these tiers go to a copayment plus a percentage. So, maybe it's a ten dollar copayment for tier one, plus ten percent, as an example. So, that over time, as the member's making choices, I mean, they have a little bit more dollars in the, in the front end to make those decisions, but, you know, that's, that's going to come down the road. I think the big thing today, and you don't have to make decisions, probably the one decision to make today, so we can lock in the reinsurance, is if you're comfortable with the reinsurance renewal from BP, to make a decision to lock in on that renewal. The issue with locking that in is if you, I'm not trying to sound pushy here, but if you don't, and we have a car accident next week, that reinsurance carrier has every right to underwrite your account until you lock in. So, I would suggest locking that in, these other decisions about the pharmacy.
But does that rate change depending on what we make on these other items?
No, no.
So, if we decide hypothetically, we're going to eliminate the PPO, it's gone.
Right.
It's not going to, that, that rate's not changing.
Right. And, and a good question mark, the reason for that is they're not paying claims until you get to fifty thousand anyway, so whether you have.
They don't care about that issue.
No. Whether it's a thousand dollar deductible, fifteen hundred.
I mean, I'm fine with renewing that part of it.
Okay.
At least moving, locking that in and moving forward on that particular thing, because we got to have that. And it doesn't make any difference on these other issues.
Correct.
So, at least we lock in a good rate right now.
So, you're fine with renewing?
The reinsurance.
Yeah.
Just the reinsurance.
Okay.
Are you okay with that?
That does.
Yes. So, do you need a motion on that? I entertain a motion to renew, to accept the bid for reinsurance from BP for two, twenty-fifteen.
So moved. And that's second, and that's for the million-dollar policy?
It's for the million and the fifty thousand dollar policy, basically, for both of those.
And that was the five dollars twenty-three times two hundred and eighty people, right?
Correct.
All right, I have motion second, all his favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose, motion carries. Okay, we got that taken. That was the easy part.
That's the easy part. The other things don't have to be, and this is a lot of information for you today, I mean, we're not expecting decisions and all that, but if we need to come back and meet, we can come back and meet, but before the employee meetings.
And which, we were trying to have them coordinate everybody's schedules, the twenty-ninth and thirtieth of this month.
What I need to know, I mean, I think we need to know, is what is the relative savings if you go all HSA versus PPO? I mean, enough people have now made these conversions in the marketplace, that there's got to be some information you guys can obtain from your sources.
The.
I mean, I can Google, but that's about the extent of what I could do.
What, the, the savings that you would get, and we can go back to UMR, keep in mind, they're a little bit limited here, we only got at the most three quarters, but they would simply be able to take your claims history, and they would take all of the claims that went through the traditional PPO, that met the thousand dollar deductible, that then went into the eighty-twenty coinsurance. If you went to that plan design, we know that basically those members' deductibles are going to go from one thousand to twenty-five hundred. So, they're going to be able to tell us how many members met the thousand dollar deductible, and what level of benefits beyond that, where we could come back to the county and say, "If all of those claims that went through under the HSA plan, your members would have paid out this much more, which the county would have saved that much because you're cost-shifting, the member's going to pay more there before the county comes in and pays." That's going to be the quickest look, is to look backwards.
Can we get that analysis fairly quickly?
Yeah, so, we'll go back and get that from them.
I mean, that's not saying we're doing it, I just, we need to know, we have to make our insured consumers, they have to be in consumers, or we, we will eventually see these, these bottom-line numbers on this page go up, 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 until we can't afford it. And it's good to know what the, what the impact today is. And I agree with you, Jeff, that, you know, maybe the best option is looking forward, we grandfather everybody that's current, today, as of today, on a PPO, they're grandfathered. And any new employee has taken HSA, and that may be the way to go about it. Unless they're not qualified. Unless they're not qualified, in which case, we'd have some kind of documentary process that they prove they're not qualified.
So technically, all of the National Guard members would not be qualified for HSA insured tri-care.
But they would have to bring in evidence thereof, you know?
And, and they can be covered on the high deductible, they just can't have money going into the health savings account.
Which, you know, defeats the purpose of having the high deductible plan.
Right.
And the cost savings between us or another, you would have to consider the money that we, as the county, are putting into the HSA accounts, too.
Right, but that's a relatively nominal amount, is it like sixty bucks a month, eighty bucks a month, something like that?
Yeah.
And there's.
Eighty-eight, eighty-nine dollars a month.
And it's still a relatively modest number of people doing it. It's not even, where, ten percent, maybe?
Yeah.
You on a PPO, Debbie?
I'm on it, no, I don't take the county.
Oh, you don't have it, okay.
She saves county lots of money.
Well, I just, I feel you leaning towards the traditional and arguing more for the traditional, I don't, I guess I don't understand why necessarily, so I'm trying to feel you out of this.
I think that the players are becoming consumers, and if we add an extra tier four to the, to the prescriptions, and we also increase their out-of-pocket, they are, you know, more or less becoming consumers. It's just traditionally, most people don't sit around and have six thousand dollars ready to pay, you know, so that they don't have that savings. Yes, and an HSA is what it's about, it's saving for that, but it would take them two years to get to that point, in order to make that one big claim.
But it'd also make them think about going to the doctor each time, just because their big toe hurts, and so, that's.
But, but if they have that.
I agree with both sides, we can argue.
But if they have the big claim, if they have the big claim, they only owe six thousand dollars.
Yeah.
If they have to have a heart transplant, and it's a quarter of a million dollars, they owe six thousand dollars, period. That's it. Under the PPO, they owe whatever the various claims are, you know, you get the doctor and everybody, for your copays, et cetera. Then, once you cap out over your, whatever the number is, then you start having to pay, what, eighty-twenty?
Right.
So, twenty percent of a quarter of a million dollars is fifty thousand dollars out-of-pocket.
Well, but they're limited to their out-of-pocket maximum, so currently, you're at, you know, thousand dollar deductible, then twenty percent to three thousand total.
And then, we pay a hundred?
Correct.
Okay.
They don't reach it as fast, you know, so.
Yeah.
Something like that, if you're trying to deter the ER, you can always raise that copay, too, if you feel like they're using it too much.
The ER is, I mean, that's a killer.
It is. It wasn't going to save us a whole lot last year.
So, we have the ability to change the deductibles within the plan?
Can we also get a, can you guys run an ER utilization rate?
Sure.
And what, what about, so you got a proposed prescription, I mean, do we have the ability to change that?
To change the copays?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, this, since you're non-grandfathered, you all have complete flexibility within your plan up to the government limits.
I'm not saying we're going, we're going to do this, I just want to make this clear, but, I mean, what would be, what's just saying twenty-five percent to a maximum of two hundred for all prescriptions?
Good.
I mean, and I'm just throwing that out there, but, I mean, I'd like to probably see the formulary to see what most of the drugs that we're utilizing, but, you know, if you've got more skin in the game when you get a prescription filled, you're going to.
And many of the base drugs now are, I mean, are darn near free. The copay's more, the copay is frequently more than a lot of your over-the-counter drugs.
If you're going into that point, Mark, if you're going in and getting a four dollar over the counter, you're not even turning it into insurance, you're just paying the four dollars. So, your members would still have that option, but we can run, we can have Optum RX.
Yeah, but trust me, the pharmacy's running that through your insurance.
They shouldn't be, I mean.
They should be, because they'll get the copay.
Well, not only if you pay the copay, they're not supposed to run those, if they're a four dollar medication, they're not supposed to run those on your card.
Yeah, you wouldn't, I mean, you generally wouldn't turn it in.
Because it's not supposed to go into your claim funding.
I mean, and I, and I don't.
But we can, we can run that savings analysis, so.
I mean, or at least raise it, raise it ten dollars or something, you know, twenty, twenty, forty, and sixty or something.
We can, we can run, we can have Optum RX, the PBM Pharmacy Benefit Management Company run a savings analysis, and look at just a flat twenty-five percent for all prescriptions, and it'll go in and show the cost to the members and the savings.
Yeah, see how much it would affect everybody.
Sure.
I mean, I, I don't know, it might affect people a lot, I don't want to.
Uh, no, very good point. I, I think to Debbie's point, I would, I would echo that, Joe would too, is, we, we like high deductible health savings accounts. We transitioned all of our employees at Wall Street to that several years ago, but we're a forty-person employer compared to the county having four hundred members covered. So, the, you have a lot of, you know, traditional employees who have came out of the HMO world, PPO world, where they've been used to copayments, and it's an education process to get them to high deductible HSAs. At the end of the day, as they have claims, they've got to pay those claims, and they either have the wherewithal to do it, or they don't. I mean, if it's a high hospital claim or something, they can, of course, make payments to the hospital and all those things, too, but at the end of the day, if it's a mother or father taking their child in, and, and keep in mind, we're not talking preventative stuff here, preventative's covered a hundred percent under all these plans, so it's going in for, you know, some type of sick care, you know, they've got to go in and make those payments, and for some people, at least in their mind, their perception is it's easier to pay a little bit higher premium, and be able to pay my twenty bucks to the doctor, fifty bucks to the doctor, than paying the whole bill. Whether, you know, I personally am on a high deductible health savings account, I believe in that, too, but it's, it's a, it's, it's, you know, everyone has their perception of how they want to purchase their medical care, but it's not, it's not right or wrong if the county decided to get away from the PPO from a business perspective. Everyone can be covered under the high deductible, no problem, it's just they potentially may or may not be able to put money in the HSA, and the county can't put it in there for them either. So, again, if I'm retired military, I'm on TRICARE, I mean, I can't get the, the HSA contribution, or can I put money in it? Now, I have secondary insurance to turn my coverage into tricare, so, but we'll run you those.
If we raise the emerg, the ER deductible too, that, that comes out of their maximum out-of-pocket though, right?
Right, so now...
The copay would apply.
Yeah, so keep in mind that all of your medical costs go to this three thousand. And now with the government, where everything has to go to this combined out-of-pocket, we can raise things like the emergency room and so forth, which is fine. But if you don't raise these out-of-pockets, at the end of the day, now, if Randy just has one ER visit during the year, yes, it affects me. But if I have knee surgery, I've met my out-of-pocket, it's not gonna cost me anything for ER or pharmacy, unless you move to some higher limits.
Yeah, I think, I think to your point, you know, it's an education process, and so if it's two hundred dollars to go to the ER, or it's fifty dollars to go to urgent care, I mean, that's, that's a big difference.
Right.
My wife worked in seven, and I think they just had their meeting with the state. On ER now, if you go to the ER and you're not, this is next year, you're not admitted, you'll pay your copay and a hundred dollars.
Sometimes it's a percentage, sometimes it's copay and a percentage too.
Yeah, and I, I think what they told them in the senate was that basically, you know, they're trying to encourage them to go to the urgent cares and some of these other after-hour places, and not go to the ER, which is the most expensive healthcare you can go to. So, uh, I think, you know, it, people are gonna think before they go to the ER. Now, if your, you know, if your child breaks his arm playing baseball, you're gonna go to the ER, and they're gonna say that he's not gonna be admitted, you're, you're gonna pay a hundred dollars plus the copay, but, you know, that's...
Those aren't the ones we're talking about, that's not the problems.
Yeah, yeah.
That's the other ones.
But, but we'll run you that.
But we don't know what that utilization rate is, in all honesty, and it could be really tiny for all we have.
Yeah, we'll, we'll run you that. So we're going to, our takeaways, obviously, we're gonna renew with BP, we'll get the, uh, the forms and stuff over to do that. We're gonna run a deductible report, looking at the PPO compared to the high deductible, if you would transition everyone to that. The ER utilization report, we're also gonna look at the twenty-five percent as an example on all pharmacy, and do a savings analysis on that. And get those back, we'll work on those right away this week, and push to get those as quickly as possible.
Said paperwork on the BP, do we need to sign a contract?
Not today, well, I mean, we will, but we'll get that to Debbie, email it over so y'all can sign.
Do you wanna go ahead and vote?
Well, my que, yeah, I was gonna say, because we can't, we did not roll call votes, we can't sign a contract.
Okay.
And you said yes, tomorrow's the deadline. I entertain a motion to approve the contract with BP.
Okay.
Approve and sign the contract.
Approve and sign.
Okay, so moved.
Call a roll please.
Jeff?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Yes, good.
Our roll call vote, that's approved, and then when you get us the contract, I can sign it on behalf of the commission, and life's good.
Perfect.
Otherwise, otherwise it wasn't gonna happen. Sam, is there other information that you would like? This has an enormous impact on next year's budget, so...
No, I'm just gonna...
Well, luckily, it doesn't have a whole lot of impact on it.
Yeah.
It's been a good report.
Yeah, but it does have an impact, I mean, it's two, it's two and a half million dollars in expense that we have to set aside. So, if there are any other pieces of data you'd like, make sure that you know us last time.
But the good news is it's only one percent versus twelve.
Yeah, we've done, we've done some twenties.
Uh, very last thing, just on the left-hand side, your ancillary renewals. Assurant, who we're with now for the life, dental vision and so forth, went up. So we're recommending moving that to Guardian, and you can look at the numbers, but basically, it's going to give us a rate hold on the life, and the optional life. Assurant was going up quite a bit, so Guardian will be a rate hold there.
What's the difference in the coverages?
Same coverage.
Do they have like, you have to use their network, or you get zero, or...
No, so this, well, on the life benefits, it's all the same, on the dental, on the dental...
Dental and vision?
Dental and vision, it's, uh, Guardian has a network as Assurant does. In rural Missouri, which Jefferson City is, you have very small percentage of dentists in those networks. We've been on Guardian before with the county, so...
We're changing again.
All the years.
So, so changing back, and then on the vision, uh, is VSP.
Okay, so you have to help me here. My question is, people have a dentist, they don't go shopping for dentists every week. If you're current, and this doesn't apply to me, so, if, if you go to a dentist, and it's your family dentist, you've been going for fifteen years, if we changed to Guardian, are you gonna show up to the dentist officer, and say, "You have to pay the whole cost, you have no insurance"?
No, very good question. They can, with Guardian, as with Assurant, they can go to any dentist they wanna go to, period. And it's gonna pay at that level of benefits for what we'd call an out-of-network dentist, but it's the standard hundred eighty, fifty benefit. There's a few dentists in the networks for these companies, if you seek out and go to one of those, they'll pay at a little bit higher rate, plus you know they're not gonna balance bill. But we do not have an issue with, with Assurant really, or Guardian balance billing.
Same on the VSP networks?
Yeah, and the VSP network's the same.
Same, okay.
So, that is my question.
Just the savings in mind, if I move it.
So, the only thing really going up is the dental?
Yeah, dental's going up, just a little bit. Still a lot less than the renewal, but...
Yes, it's a lot less.
It's gonna cost us additional seven thousand dollars annually?
Yep.
Is that right? One fifty-five versus one forty-seven, eight?
Yep.
Dental's an option?
And part of that's, part of, part of that's...
It's the county pays for the employee, it's an option for our dependents.
So, part of, to, to your point, Chris, the...
Part of, part of it is ours.
Yeah, 'cause part of that's yours, and part of it's the dependents, so...
And the life insurance is all employee?
Uh, the, the basic life is the county's, and then the employees purchase voluntary.
And you do have really high utilization on that dental?
Okay.
So, shopping, it was, plus, we got a rate hold for the life, optional life, and the vision.
For two years.
For two years, and then we'll have a cap for next year on the dental as well.
Good, like it. Greg, you had a question?
Just a, just a statement, if regardless of what, go to just the HSA with the PPO option, because it's a grandpa or a grandfathers, we, we really need to do a good employee education on consumerism and your medical care, because most, most people really do not get it.
Very good point.
They need to come to the meetings, most people.
Hey, I got a solution to that, I got a solution to that, that if you don't show up to meeting, you can't apply, you can't have coverage.
Now, the sheriff does a good job getting all of his guys there.
Good job, Greg.
He's just the exception.
And Betsy.
To that department.
We know where the power lies there.
Do you want them to make a motion?
Then just circulate some...
Send those contracts or...
Just circulate some, I mean, you okay with that? If you don't attend one of the meetings, you cannot get, you cannot get coverage.
That's just gonna be the calls to you then, they're gonna say, "Well Debbie, I just can't make one of those, dah 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 dah."
Okay, so do this.
So that's a decision between you guys.
You know, instead of denying, 'cause you write, we may not be able to actually deny coverage, that it's an extra hundred and fifty dollar a month premium, if you don't, per month premium, out of your paycheck, if you don't attend one of the meetings. I mean, we do six or eight meetings, it's not like we do one meeting.
We do more like twenty.
It's not like, it's not like we do, okay, it's, it's not like we do Thanksgiving, the Wednesday before Thanksgiving at four PM's, the only meeting we have, people, come on.
And we do do a lot of education at those meetings with the HSAs, and you know, what the pluses are to doing that.
It's ridiculous people won't show up.
Talking to the pharmacist, talking, making determinations on physicians.
Are all those meetings done here, or they're done throughout the county?
We go to all the locations, the big department locations, and we have for the, for a lot of years, since I've been here. But the biggest thing I wanna remind you of, though, next year when we get our new computer system, I want, this is gonna be all online.
Then you put a test through there where they have to go through a thousand questions, you know, not literally, but... But, I mean, it's really easy to put those programs in there where you have to watch a video of a discussion about talking to the pharmacist.
I've done those.
And then at the end of the, you can't even take the question at the end of the video until the video is over. You know, it's kinda like a lot of these software agreements now, where you can no longer just check the box, "I agree." You have to go all the way down through it, and sometimes they'll put checkboxes in the middle of it.
Right, just to show proof.
To prove the shit. Yes, Larry?
One thing I suggest, is our guys, most of them, Tampa, and you, don't, we need to get down to their level.
Yeah.
You know, right now, it's, it's, I feel above their level.
We're almost done, or anything?
You have to get it down.
Sure.
We're almost done with this.
This is where you're not saying you can get a consumer, this is where you're saying the pharmacist says, ask them to...
Asking questions. Um, you probably need to make a motion on the Guardian, so you'll sign those contracts too.
Just like, if I go research...
Making the change on the life.
Wait till it gets back in here.
If I'm gonna pay for it, I want the best product I get.
Right.
So, the, the other issue is if you have trouble getting people to meeting, have a default standard. If you don't show up, this is what you get. That usually motivates people too.
Oh, I need to do it across the USA, because it affects everybody.
As soon as Chris gets back in here, we'll vote that.
Yeah, we'll do that.
Yeah, we'll send those over. Well, you also need them to, because of ACA and the regulations, you're gonna, you're on one hard signature.
So what are our, what's, what other ways can we keep the cost down? I mean, what's, what are the people going to the doctor for, is it because they're bad health? Or is it because of unhealthy lifestyles? I mean, is that something, I know what you did to the health?
It's, 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 it's both, I mean, but...
Where are we at wellness?
We've done...
What are we doing for wellness?
We had, uh...
Well, we're having just a little discussion about that.
Yeah, we've had a couple...
Well, that's kinda where, I mean, we taught, I have, I have for years said we have to do carrot and stick for wellness. And we have only done carrot as far as I know, we've never done stick. At some point, we have to do stick.
Stick would be a difference in premiums. And you would set up a proactive approach of biometrics, uh, as an example.
You have to do a primary care, physical every year, if you don't do that, you pay a premium increase. I mean, there ought to be some things that we can put in there.
You can do it by your, um, just having your screenings.
Biometric screenings, I mean, you can get just a, having an action where they do a biometric screening, fill out a health risk assessment, and there's not really a result from that, but just doing the activity. Or you can get more detailed to where you have to hit certain BMI metrics to...
So if you choose unhealthy lifestyle things, then we can penalize you or charge you more?
Yeah.
Because you're raising it up for everybody else?
Yeah, so...
If you smoke or chew a bullet?
You can do, you can do, I don't wanna talk about that before we start, tobacco?
Tobacco, I know, I know. Well, it's exactly what I'm talking about, it's, that's where there's a lot of health issues.
But one of the easiest ones to start with is tobacco, you can do an attestation form, or do you use tobacco or not?
Can we do, can we do the Biggest Loser, County Biggest Loser?
You would do BMI.
I have dead serious, I have a time breaker.
Right.
I think it'd be a great thing, I'd like to find, give them a day off or something, if they win.
We need to do a quick, we need to do a quick vote to authorize the supplemental coverages to be with Guardian. So, I got a motion. Second, any discussion? And this will be to, not only to go with Guardian, but also to sign the contracts.
And to approve, yeah.
Call a roll please.
And sign the contract.
Jeff?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Yes.
By roll call vote, that's approved, anything else?
I would like to add this information that you guys are gonna receive to the twenty seconds agenda. Hopefully, we'll have all that information. And just a food for thought, as far as what Randy and them were suggesting, is to increase the out-of-pocket prescription, you know, to the higher level, I agree with that, and to the four tiers, I think is a good, good idea to start in, as you do that. I know you guys wanna find out about the two different plans, I'll get you the amount of people that are on each plan. And as far as...
That'll be on the twenty, whatever it is, on the twenty second, you can remember it.
Prescriptions?
Okay, anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you all very much, really appreciate it.
Good seeing you.
Good to see you.
Yeah, don't bother us again, and do some, let's do this early.
Joe, thank you so much.
Thank you, I told you we're scared.
We're gonna take a five-minute break.
I'm gonna get some coffee and...
Mark, did I lie to you?
Yeah, I brought us some coffee too.
Joe, thank you, y'all had a great job explaining this to us. I liked it. Thanks for all your help, all these shit was protected. Thank you.
Yeah.
It was a great group of people. I'm nervous when those things come out, I'm nervous when those things come out of your bag. I don't know what's coming.
I would tell you, it's not good.
We've had some bad ones over the years.
I know. And I've said, and we do have two plans.
Thank you. Two plans over the stop loss. Yeah, I think Debbie had said that, we anticipate anymore.
Hey, thank you, Jim, I appreciate it.
At this time, unless something comes up that is unexpected.
Well, good.
If you have any more questions, or you need anything else, call me.
Okay, I'll do it, thank you.
'Cause he's hard to catch.
Yeah, I can imagine.
She does awesome jobs. Thank you, very nice, pretty good question. Everything they're looking at, yeah.
Still Randy, Betsy?
But I have thirty-two hundred dollars in sick leave too, so I don't go to the doctor.
See, you build up pretty quick, of course, unless you just hit a bad spell.
Uh, Mike, Derek always does it.
Yeah, it's true.
They get a toll if they wanna take on sick.
I hear that.
Many times, love it.
Out rounding a piece of the wagon, I opened the door, this is, let's keep going.
Who we got for y'all? Quick thing? Randall or whoever it is? It's gonna be quick, right?
Randall, right?
So you look at, it's getting less and less of a cost to the guardian's experience versus one orthopedic group. You have a breaking fast for surgeons.
Yeah, there are things, in, in the fifteen... But, if you're not still, there's still safety. We will have to, see what the safety surgeons, we've led them to two point four. And we're, we're probably gonna go with a one point eight. And now, next year, the two point four will be the actual number, it'll, it'll cover all, so... Yeah.
Sorry, we took a lot.
That's all right.
Budget two point four. But if that comes next year, then if you do get the actual, you have more service, it gives you that different side.
You know, they were going off a week or two ago, I was driving around, still putting stuff where I didn't get it. But every business I drove by, everybody standing outside. Sirens, get inside. You're gonna die.
He's driving around, getting a phone, "Get inside."
That's what I do, I'm unloading trash and stuff. Please, this person, there's nothing to see here. I got my equipment lease card for the collector's office.
Why didn't you, you, did you vote against them sirens when they put them in?
I voted against it because the money came from the receivership funds, you know.
That's true.
I, you know...
You got outvoted though?
Yeah, it wasn't, I, a lot of people I talked to, or there's actually people that called me and said, "Yeah, we need them," and stuff. So I was like, "Okay, you know, I'm not just voting for me." So if it would've came down to whatever funds, I probably would've voted for it, 'cause, I don't know.
To self-insure?
Yeah. Yeah. So I for sure wasn't gonna vote for them on, on that part of it, and just 'cause I didn't like them. Somebody else called me, "I can't, I can't hear them inside my house." I said, "That's part of the problem, they're outdoor warning sirens, they're not for people when you're inside. Like inside here, they're not for us, they're for people outside, on the golf course, farming, I don't know, you know."
I guess if you get far enough away, you probably can't hear them, but I mean, for the most part.
Well, the last time when they went, 'cause I'm in the city, and I could hear the sirens, what they had.
Yeah.
So I went out on my deck, and I couldn't understand what they were saying. The only time I could understand...
It's 'cause that guy's talking with a bag of marbles in his mouth.
I could understand, but he said it was all clear.
Hey Larry, did you get this letter about the proposed abandonment discontinuance of the railroad? So I can, okay, we don't need to do anything with it? No. What are they doing down at DePringer Center Thursday, you have any clue? I just got an invite. Are they gonna have treats or...
I imagine.
Tell everybody to swing by there and say hi to them, I don't think I'm gonna make it.
All right, we're back to the agenda, let's talk about the Randall Drive NID.
Well, we've got, Randall Drive, if you go out to Scott Station, Randall Drive intersects with Scott Station. To the left is our road, to the right is a private road, it was built, um, prior to my time, so it's plus twenty years ago. We have now a, we, in the past, we've looked at doing NIDs, or, we never could get the majority of the people to talk about it, the property owners. Most of this is apartments. We now have a single property owner that owns the majority of it, he would like to bring these streets up to county standards. What, we met with them last week, well, we've been meeting with them probably getting close to a year now. But they've, they've finally got to the point where they have the ability to be able to vote on it and go forward, and I think it has a good possibility of passing. Our question, in the past, when we've done, done NIDs, um, Mark and you, or Jill probably have to help me here, there's the possibility of two different bond sales, one for construction, and then one for final. But the county commission has done in the past.
We paid the cost upfront, and then done one, one bond issue.
Right, and we were reimbursed for that amount. Is that, uh, same way with design, it's something, this is more complex than what we can do in-house. But is that something that the commission, we need to know that upfront to be able to take it to the voters?
How big was the number?
Three hundred thousand. Yeah, I was gonna say roughly three hundred thousand.
We've done, that's, we've done that size before.
Right.
It's all before my time. I wouldn't hear for any of those.
And we have another, another subdivision that's looking at doing the same thing. It's out off of, is it Vantage? Out off of Vantage, Long Route C, it's called Brush Creek.
Yeah, I'll put it on there and check it out.
Brush Creek. We haven't got to the point where we are right now with Randall Drive, but Eric's been meeting with them out there. And they also seem to be interested in bringing the streets up to, ours would be a little different. The lot size is a lot bigger. They would just have to have their roads paved, which they have. We don't know the, if it's built to our standards or not, because we weren't there for the inspections. But I just wanted to get your all's feelings, if, if that's viable to build in front of the initial money to be reimbursed.
If we've got the money, it makes sense because it saves, it kinda saves everybody long-term. There's a lot of expense to do two bond issues.
Well, and, so I met with Larry and Larry and Eric out there. One of the owners on Randall Drive, they're looking to pay cash for their portion, or
Right.
as an option.
Even less.
Right, and then Brush, Brush Creek, it was, what, a hundred thousand maybe?
Yeah.
Roughly? So, I mean, you're not talking, I mean, if the one property owner pays a lot of that, then we're not out a whole lot of money.
Most of the landowners, I think, would be interested on both, the majority on both projects would be interested in making that payment ahead of time. So...
I mean, that will affect the other ones as far as what's left in the bond. We would have to pay probably a bigger share over time.
So, if you're all interested, we'll proceed forward. It's been probably seventeen, eighteen years since we've done one. I know Bill Deacon is still here, so it's been a long time ago.
And I would suggest that we either get Tony Stigman or Gilmore and Bell on board.
That's who, that's who we've been talking with. We've met with Tony Stigman and her assistant already once. To kinda get, I wanted Gary to hear from the horse's mouth, the steps we had to go through and how the voting procedure was set up and everything else, so... You know, she, she's aware of at least Randall. She's not on Brush Creek yet.
So you got Randall, Brush Creek. Who else you think would be interested in doing this? Cause if we're gonna do it, let's...
South Laney Creek?
I don't think they'll pay anything.
Castle Rock?
Lock and Dam might be interested.
But that's, that's options. These are the only ones. We're not out there promoting this. If the question's asked, you know, how can we get our streets brought into, we always bring up the NIDs. I just didn't know how you all felt as far as funding the money for the first, so they wouldn't have to have two bond offerings, just the one.
So we don't even have the road yet. This would bring it up to county standards.
Right.
And then we would take it over.
Right. We don't, Randall, I'm sure Chris has gotten phone calls. Every year, we have a real bad winter. We get phone calls out to Wazoo, out of public work, well, how come county's not out there pushing our streets? Well, it's not our street. It's a public street, yes, but it's not maintained by the county. It's never been accepted into it, so... And right now, the one landowner's doing all the snow removal on Randall. He's a, the other, there's...
What makes it a public street, then?
It's dedicated to the public for use.
I mean, it's just a driveway.
Basically, yeah.
But it's still dedicated to the public for, no one person can say, you can't come in here. It's, it's actually dedicated on flat. It's same way we've got on our subdivisions where the roads remain private. It's dedicated to public for public use, but it's not accepted in.
How do they maintain them? Do they have home associations that keep control of them?
How they maintain them is their problem.
Well, not really, cause when they come to the planning commission, you know, we can start saying, you need to have a plan. Because right now, we've got one out there on West Side that they have the water retention basin too, that the home association said, we don't want it.
And we run into the issues.
They just deny their planning permit.
But that's what I'm saying, is they never had a plan for it if it got taken over by a bank or, you know, stuff like that.
We have some issues out there where it's the planning, it was, it was plotted as a private use street. One of them, I can't remember the name of it, it's off of M Street out there. I don't know as far fact, but I think the developer misled the people, saying, yeah, it's built to county standards, I just don't wanna turn it over right now.
Oh, it was distler's, yeah.
Yeah, but it's not. We went out and actually...
I agree with that. We've dealt with that for...
We went out and courted, and half the cores didn't turn out, and they've got a lot of cracking and stuff going on in the subdivision, so... We've got one big one coming, possibly.
Yeah, that's Parkview Meadows, so...
Could we accept that?
No.
No.
And they're wanting in?
Not our problem, as we say.
Yeah, but, I don't know. I, I talked to Larry and Larry about this a little bit, and yeah, it's, it's not our problem. But at the same time, you know, if somebody files bankruptcy or something, and, I mean, I don't...
We can't be forced to take it over. It's a private street. It's a private development. And we can't be forced to take it over. I mean, you know, it's the old joke about a golf course has to go bankrupt three times, or twice before it can make a profit. If developers realize that all they have to do is shot in a street and then go bankrupt, I mean, I, any lawyer can figure out how to write a plan, a subdivision plat where the streets are owned by a different company than the building lots are.
Mm-hmm. I just think maybe we need to take a little bit different approach in that, you know, maybe we don't... You know, if you, if you wanna have a gravel road, and you wanna put a subdivision in, that's fine. We'll approve your building permit. But if you're gonna put in a paved street, that you need to do it per our codes, or we're not gonna issue any more building permits in your subdivision.
Well, there's issues. I know that they're handled different ways. Some, some agencies require bonds to be put up, to where you have to put a bond up to, that the street will be constructed, but at this point, we don't have that option.
But why would we do that? I mean, I guess my, my question is, and I know we're getting way beyond where we started, but, you know, if a developer wants to put in a paved concrete street, but doesn't wanna worry about bringing it to county code, why is that the county's problem?
I under, I agree.
I mean, that ought to be the developer's problem, and frankly, it ought to be the land, the people who buy the houses and buy lots in there's problem.
We run, run into the same option or problem out there on Terra, where Jeff used to live. You know, that was sold as a private street, and then we fought that issue time and time again about trying to get it brought into it. You know, again, it, I don't wanna sound callous, but it's buyer beware.
Yeah.
You know, they bought these lots at a reduced price because the developer didn't have to bring them up to county standards. You know, why should the county have to step in and, and pay? That's what we're concerned mainly on Parkview Meadows, is the amount of money that we have to pay. It's getting rated to be in the same shape or if not worse than like Wilmore and Courtyard and some...
And I'll go back to us, I don't mean to be callous, but, so what? You know, if, if, if that street gets to the point where you need a four-wheel truck to get in there, well, I'm sorry. You need a four-wheel drive truck to get in there. It's not my problem. It's not the county's problem. It's the people who live out there, because they bought the lots. And I, I've never looked at what a lot costs in Parkview Meadows, so I don't know, but, you know, if a par... If, if, if the equivalent sized lot in an equivalent neighborhood, and there aren't very many, so I mean, it's... That did bring the roads up to and dedicate them to the county, you know, it may be five thousand dollars less for the lot. And the reason it's five thousand dollars less is cause the developer got away with a half million dollars less in construction costs. Hey, you know, there's a reason you paid five thousand dollars less. And there's some nice homes out there.
I know.
And those are not, pardon the expression, unsavvy people out there. There are a lot of people that bought out there that are pretty savvy folks.
I think, yeah, again, it's buyer beware. I, I think they were told one thing and different things for them, so...
It's what pieces of paper are for.
That's what attorneys are for, in my opinion.
And I would say no. When you're fronting that money for those projects, is there something those landowners could actually sign for us to, to ensure that?
What we've done in the past, I have to get with Marvin and...
The NID, by the passage of the NID and our acceptance of the petition, allows us to put on their tax bills, the assessment.
Not just all the way done and put the knee on?
But it's, it requires the passage of the NID and then our acceptance of it.
Are we doing all that before?
Just cause they pass one doesn't mean we have to accept it.
Yeah, no, we're not. They have to, like Mark said, the way I understand it, and it's been a long time, Chris was still directing back end, so I wasn't involved. But the way I understand it, they have to submit a resolution or a petition to the county commission, has to be accepted, has to be a vote taken. And once that vote is taken, based on that, they're actually obligated, under my opinion.
It's either they can do it by a vote, or they can actually sign petitions if they have enough...
This is coming, Jill. You might wanna do some homework on it, because...
Well, my biggest problem was property that sold in the middle of that, cause I remember that one. I didn't get into it till it was already done. It really wasn't attached to the property yet.
So it's, the way it works is they bring a draft petition to us. We review it. We say the draft is okay, or if we have a problem with it, we say no. For example, maintenance can be an issue. We might say, no, we want a maintenance fund. After we approve the petition, they can cer, either circulate it, or they can have an election. They have different options.
Right.
Most people circulate. I don't, I don't think we did elections before, but we can do it, you can do an election, but most people circulate. Cause if you have enough landowners that sign off on it, it's two-thirds of the landowners.
I think it's, yeah, super majority, or, yeah.
It's two-thirds of the landowners by land.
By square foot, yeah.
Yeah. Then they bring that back to us, signed off, and then we have to accept it. Once we accept it, then that gives us the legal authority to put on their property, every parcel in that area. Whether they voted, signed off, or voted for it or not, every parcel in the area, we can put an assessment on there for any costs incurred. Okay. Is that all you had?
Yeah, as long as you're, we'll start moving forward.
What's the seventy-five hundred dollars for safe routes to schools?
Oh, that's Eric's grant. That's that, uh, that's the flats I can speak out of.
Yeah, but why is it coming out of contingency?
That I have to ask Christian about. That's what she had suggested.
I thought it was a grant.
It was. It started out as a grant. I'm not sure if something changed this year or not, or anything.
No, it's still a grant. We're, we're still having to foot some of the bill. You know, the grant was only for two hundred and fifty, and we're looking, I think, at less, I think it's like four hundred thousand, which, that's what we told you when we started the whole thing, that we were gonna put some money into it.
But why is it coming out of contingency? We didn't budget it?
That, let me, I can check and get back to you on that.
I don't need an answer right now. Here, I'll just give it back to you, and you guys can, when you get an answer, and let us know. And you can just attach it to it for all I care.
On that NID, there's no actual, there's no cost to us.
No.
No, just a front cost.
It'd just be...
If we did upfront.
We charge them.
We can't charge them interest. We can't charge them interest on what we upfront.
It'd just be the interest lost on that money that we have.
Which is so little as it is. How long's the construction project gonna be? How long will it take them to upgrade that road?
Ninety days, probably.
But they're...
Losing, losing the interest for three months on three hundred thousand dollars.
No, it's gonna take them, they can pay it for up to twenty years, can't they?
No, no, no.
On the property tax?
Once we, once we complete it, bonds are sold and we're, we're reimbursed out of the bonds.
And then they do pay the interest of bonds.
So the bonds, they're actually...
Right.
We're, we're only fronting, you know, six months' worth of interest is what we're fronting.
Right. Bound, get designed, and everything.
You look at the property values, it would go up too if that road was upgraded, so the little bit that's gonna cost is gonna be...
A lot of people will write a check for it.
So...
It's easier. And then they never have to worry about it.
Oh, you take checks?
The property bill we're in.
I'm fine with it.
I know we got a closed session issue coming up, but I wanna get everything else done before we go into closed session. Special Olympics, we were asked to write a letter of support. I'm okay with it. It doesn't commit us to any money or anything. It just says we wanna keep it here in town, but I know you wanna talk about it, so...
Well, that's, that's just what I wanted to ask. I mean, I, I know in reviewing some of the things that the chamber had sent out, and you circulated that. Just, I don't, I don't know where the option three is coming in at, or where they're proposing that, or...
Twelve acres?
Yeah, but anyway, I didn't know. It sounded like option three required some city and county funding for infrastructure.
We have not asked for nor been committed to any funding for infrastructure.
I'm, I'm okay with a letter of support.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. The letter, I'm fine with it.
We need to vote this, or just...
Um, I think we need to vote just a letter of support. And I'll have Melody run over. Anything else coming before the commission? Yes, pay. A new what?
New faucet.
Gotta talk to our maintenance guy.
Which?
I'll click this on that one.
Which bathroom?
Women's. There's one that's, you know, you turn, and then one you push the button and the water's supposed to stop after a while, or the water don't wanna stop. And now I guess it's not working at all.
So why, have you talked to the maintenance guy about it? Cause we have a maintenance director that's supposed to handle that stuff, but... I'm saying, if it's not happening that way, it needs to be, so...
Have, have Greg get you a new faucet.
If you're gonna do it, you might as well do both of them at the same time, and do not buy them from Lowe's. Otherwise, we'll be fixing it next year again.
All right, I agree with that. Buy you a couple mowings.
Well, they got mowings there too.
Yeah, they do. They're specially made.
The entered.
Specially made junk? Especially made out of lightweight plastic with a mowin sticker on it.
You get what you pay for, so, you know, that may last you a year, may last you twenty years. Just saying, there's, you just, those get used a ton more than just your faucet at your house too, so...
There. I just sent Greg an email.
Yeah, if he doesn't have money and a budget, he may tell you that he's got it until next year. Y'all just can't use the bathroom.
For a two hundred dollar, for a two hundred dollar faucet.
I know y'all brought this up a while back, and I never heard anything else about it. I thought he had fixed it, changed the cartridges or something in there, so...
They changed it, but then it goes...
That's why we got a director. Your road needs paint? Go talk to Larry.
No. He's gonna say, go talk to Jeff.
Anything else coming before the commission, before we go into closed session?
Now, if we get those calls.
I entertain motion to go into closed session percent sixty, ten oh two one seven three to deal with personnel issues.
So I moved.
Second.
Motion second. Call roll, please.
Jeff?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And Mr. Mark?
Yes. By roll call vote, the motion carries. We'll go into closed session, deal with personnel issues. Take a moment, turn off the equipment here. We gotta turn off the equipment before we can do any.